It's like the gang's all here. Seven o'clock, without further ado, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Lakewood City Council to for February 10th to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bokey.
President.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
You're muted, Mary.
Councilmember Moss is with us. He's finding your mute button, unmute button. Deputy Mayor Wayland.
President.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a forum?
Thank you. We have one, one agenda item, and that is the interview of applicants for the vacancy on Lakewood City Council. For those of you in the waiting room, ready to participate, I'd like to go over the ground rules very simply. There's twelve and a half minutes allocated per candidate. We will have a allow you a two-minute opening statement, five questions from council members of approximately two minutes each and a thirty-second close. I will cut you off if you come to the time in fairness to all applicants. And so, without further ado, first individual is Lynn Larson. And there is a timer that's visible in certain views on on the screen, and that will give you an idea how we're going. Let's see. Mr. Larson, he's been promoted to panelist, but no sound or video. There you go.
How about that?
We're being muted. We'll cut the back, the background noise out. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Larson, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lynn Larson. I moved to, excuse me, I have to kill the feedback here. I came to Lakewood in nineteen sixty-one at the age of fourteen, went to junior high at Mann Junior High, and enjoyed junior high and high school at Mann and Lakes High School. So I've lived in Lakewood all my childhood and returned in two thousand to raise my family here. And it's always been near and dear to my heart. Started when we first moved here, we were pretty broke. My dad moved here because he got a job here, and we started school that year with one pair of pants and two shirts, and it was a good thing I could run to school because I didn't get a coat until Thanksgiving. And so I've lived poor, but never homeless. And the, the perspective that I have now for Lakewood, having lived here and participated in various aspects of the city, including running the the Advisory Board for ten years, Citizen Advisory Group, being acquainted with the detail and function of the city, really liking the city and enjoying being able to walk as to Starbucks and, and we used to be Villa Plaza, living in the house of the guy that built the Villa Plaza now. So very much ingrained in the city and love it, and now find myself with the opportunity to give back to the city by participating in the government. I bring to the table a business background of industrial and commercial real estate where I've had the opportunity.
We're gonna have to, we have to move on to question number one at this point.
Over the years. And that makes me an imaginative participatory.
Then you're, you're gonna need, you're gonna need.
Manager of.
You're gonna need your earphones.
Processes and dreams and accomplishments of wide diversity of folks. Are you waving me off, Don?
Yes.
Yeah.
You can hear the questions.
Mr. Larson. What skills, talent, or diversity of background would you bring to the city council?
Well, I think. I think the best example I could give is when I was working selling houses in Hot Springs, Arkansas in nineteen seventy, my integrated subdivision. And I've never been a person that sees color when I see a person. And that's evidenced in my high school background where I just grew up with children of military families, and they were GIs who'd married women from Korea and Germany. And, and it was a wonderful wide diversity of, of youth. And so it's, it's it's been part and parcel of my life the whole time. And interestingly, this was just a couple, three years after Martin Luther King had done his march Selma, Alabama. And my company that I worked for at the time shipped me out of town in forty-eight hours for my personal safety. And that's what it, it was at the time. And yet, it was a perfectly natural thing for me to do. The fellow was a deputy sheriff. His wife was a registered nurse, four beautiful children came out to look at the property in a police car. And I thought, who wouldn't love to have these folks in their neighborhood? And I was, I was right. Went back in nineteen seventy-six to visit them, and there weren't any more, but they were still there and welcomed in the community. So hopefully that answers your question.
All right, thank you. Now move to question number two. Ms. Moss.
Mr. Larson, I worked at JCPenney's end of Villa Plaza, so I know what you're talking about.
You probably sold me clothes.
So how would the aforementioned attributes help you be an effective council member on day one?
Well, seems to me that it would just be the most natural thing to do, to, to not have any impediments to making good, valuable, justifiable, reasonable, all-encompassing decisions on, based on diversity of thought. It seemed to me to be just a very natural fit to be able to participate in the, in the community as it exists.
All right, then we'll move to question number three. Councilmember Bokey.
Hello, Mr. Larson. It's Councilmember Bokey. What is your vision for Lakewood?
Well, I very much like the way it's going. We, we have some work to do, I believe. We have a homeless challenge, and we have continuing upgrading of the visual entrances to the city. I think there's still work to be done there. And we have better and better employment now with the directions that Lakewood Industrial Park has taken and the new industrial area in the Woodbrook area with Amazon coming now and Tesla. So pretty excited about the jobs that I've had the opportunity to participate in seeing formed and being a part of the transactions to give us the employment base that is going to then give us a greater commercial demand base. I think we're out of balance yet. We don't really quite have the, the breadth of commercial businesses and support for the populace that we really could have here.
Thank you. Well, now move to Councilmember Farmer.
Hi, Mr. Larson. So what are the top three priorities you believe the city council should focus on in twenty twenty-one?
Well, top of my list is, I forgot to do that. The top of my list is homeless. It just breaks my heart to see a person sleeping out in the outdoors. It shouldn't have to be, that shouldn't have to be. And that would be, that, that to me is the most important thing to take care of our people or citizenry. I think it'll really, that's really a passion of mine. Secondly, to see job growth and job breadth. And third, to see improvement in our schools. We have a need to, to have our schools get back to the quality that we had in the Clover Park School District when I grew up here. And those would be my three priorities.
Thank you. Now we move to Deputy Mayor Wayland. You're muted, Jason.
Good evening, Lynn. Good to see you.
Same here.
A number of candidates, as you are aware, and we are interested in not only the background and your priorities and the other discussions that you meant, you brought forth tonight, but to kind of give us your sales pitch on why you're the right candidate at this particular time in our history.
Well, I believe that the diversity of my experience in problem solving and my demonstrated imaginative set of solutions to problems is what I would bring to the table. I think I, I looked at some of the other candidates, and I think we're really in good shape with having good choices for you to make. You know, I've, I've known Mr. Brown a long time. He's very capable, very qualified, I believe. And, and they don't come better than Alan Billingsley. We've done a lot of work in Boy Scouts together, our Eagle, Three Eagle Scout Sons, two of which have been on separate international Boy Scout trips with Alan as scout master. And, and he's an accomplished leader in his own right. What I bring to the table, though, is a broader set of experiences with all the different businesses that I have had the opportunity to learn from, as well as the different organizations I've been a part of in Lakewood. Scoutmaster at St. Mary's Church, Troop Fifty-One, and, and doing different Eagle Scout projects through the city, walking and learning and knowing it myself, having gone to school here. My mother was an educator at Lakes High School. And, and from that all, I have a real foundation in, and expertise in, in bringing people together to have a common thought, common thread that we're able to find in problem solving. And that's what I would bring to the table and what I believe sets me apart from everybody else is that, that real breadth of experience. Forty-six years now in industrial and commercial real estate, a good bit of which has been serving Lakewood and the region here, seeing how those different businesses work together, what appeals to them. I think we've got a sound, sound story to tell in Lakewood to build, build better. So that's what I would say would be my broad diversity of experience and my imaginative approach to the problem solving is, is part of, part of the job.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Now you have thirty seconds for, now you have thirty seconds for a quick wrap-up. Are you frozen out here?
That's good.
Okay, thirty, thirty seconds for a quick wrap-up.
Well, I look forward to the opportunity. I'm very, very excited at the opportunity, and should I be chosen, I'll give it my all.
Well, thank you for participating in the process tonight and for stepping forward to serve your community. We know you've been an active member of Lakewood for a while and appreciate your willingness to continue to serve. So thanks again. And our next applicant is Kimberly Davis.
Mayor Anderson, I don't see anyone signed in as a Kimberly Davis. Oh, actually, they just popped in. One moment.
So Ms. Davis, we're gonna open with your two-minute free speech, and then we'll have five questions of approximately two minutes each and followed by thirty seconds of a close. And I'll be rude to interrupt you if you go over, so that everybody has a fair timeframe. But this is not meant to be disrespectful. It's meant to try to be fair. So you, the next two minutes is yours.
Thank you. My name is Kim Davis, and I wanted to clarify something with you guys really quick. I know I had sent an email withdrawing. It, it wasn't that I didn't want to run it for the seat at the end of the year. I was a little intimidated by the process of running. I'm okay with that now. So I want you to know that my plan is to commit long-term to this. So with that said, my name is Kim Davis. I'm sixty years old. I live in Oak Brook. I've been married to the most wonderful guy in the world for twenty-two years. I swore I would not be nervous, but I am a little. I retired from government contract work in two thousand and three with the promise from my husband I didn't have to work anymore. So I felt pretty, you know, excited about being retired at forty-three years old. But thirty days into being here, he asked me to help him start a business, which is good to be home care. He said, spend thirty days and then I could go back home. But we're seventeen years in. I found, you know, obviously, my contracts background and his social work background, he's an MSW, have what has contributed to us being very successful in the business. So I have two sons. I have four grandsons, all living in San Diego. My oldest grandson is in the Navy. We actually moved Anderson Island to begin with, but our business grew so fast from two thousand and four, when we started, until two thousand and seven, when we bought a house in Oak Brook in order to effectively run our business.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to the first question from Councilmember Branstadter.
Ms. Davis, what skills, talent, or diversity of background would you bring to the city council?
Well, I have thirty-five years of managing people. I started managing a group of over forty-five when I was twenty-five years old. And you learn really quick that you have to earn people's respect. At the beginning, all I got was, you know, who are you to tell me what to do at your age? So I earned my, their respect. I just had to, or I wouldn't have survived in that business. I worked in the nineties. I'm gonna jump up to the nineties because I know I'm limited on time. But when the law went into effect that welfare to work was sixty months lifetime, I got involved in the welfare to work program in a unit called Job Search. So we had to teach people how to get a job, how to apply, how to dress. You know, we had generational welfare, but never had seen anyone get up and go to work. So it was really eye-opening. I had people in my class, eighteen, with no clue. And I had felons who had gotten out of class. So I worked with a very diverse classroom of people. From there, I jumped to the Economic Development Agency. I interviewed for case manager. But somehow, I'm not sure what exactly I said in that interview, I ended up as a monitor in the contracts and monitoring unit. My trainer only had to go out twice with me, and then I was off and running. So I have proven to myself, I have the ability to hit the ground running. I can dump in the middle, or I can start it from scratch. During the Economic Development Agency years, they ended up merging contracts, monitoring, and fiscal. So we were responsible for everything from the writing the grant proposals to holding the bidders' conferences, awarding the contracts, writing the contracts, monitoring, and all of the fiscal. So we had to also review their fiscal budget that they wrote for their contract, as well as I reviewed and approved millions of dollars a month for the reimbursement.
We're gonna have to move to the second question now.
Ms. Davis, my question to you is how would the aforementioned attributes help you be an effective council member on day one?
I think that I've learned from, you know, everything from welfare to work to managing contracts, that I can work with whoever is put in front of me. My contracts that I monitored were the youth programs, after-school programs. And I also was given the twelve city managers. You know, I worked for the county. So I had to monitor the contracts of the twelve city managers for economic development. And I was also given a contract for the mayor to monitor. The reason they gave them to me is because I'm very non-confrontational. I'm very flexible. I'm a great listener. And if my manager, like he did, said, we're not going to write anything on what the mayor does, I'm okay with that. I got the same paycheck regardless. So they didn't want me to write anything about him golf and none of that stuff. So I just wrote that there were no findings. So I've worked with a very diverse population. My business right now, we take care of Medicaid-funded seniors and disabled people, as well as developmentally disabled children and adults. So I have worked with all types, all tops, all bottoms, everybody in diverse populations. I've also attended many, many DSHS meetings at the state level. So I know a lot of them and have earned the respect there as well.
Thank you. We now move to Mr. Bokey for question three.
Ms. Davis, what is your vision for Lakewood?
Well, I'd like to start out by telling you guys that I have been watching your meetings for a while now. Part of the reason for that is I wanted to make sure that my personality fit with you guys and that I actually felt like I have something to contribute. So in doing that, I've been watching you guys for a couple months now, and I do believe that my personality would fit. I also, during several of those meetings, felt like I, I did have something to contribute. But I wanted to make sure those two things worked so that I'm, I'm a contributor to your team, not just, you know, a lump on a log sitting there. So I do believe that I am. In full transparency, I read your draft of your city council plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And I wanted to sit here and read it back to you that that's my plan, too. So what I want to tell you is, reading it, I got excited about being a part of it. I want to be a part of what you're doing going forward, whether it's in your successes or your challenges. I feel like I can help you there as well.
Thank you. Now for question four, we go to Councilmember Farmer.
Well, it sounds like we'll be kind of on the same theme with this question. So Ms. Davis, what are the top three priorities that you think the city council should focus on in twenty twenty-one?
I really did think this through a lot. The first one is the, if you keep improving the infrastructure of Lakewood, you're gonna keep attracting companies like Amazon and Tesla to come here. By doing that, brings jobs here, improves the economy. You know, it brings, you know, people's lives are better. The more jobs that are here, the more big companies that are here. So I believe that, that infrastructure is really important. And part of that, Ms. Farmers, I agree with you in the meeting where you said Phillips needs that sidewalk. And, and I don't think it's just about the kids that are walking to school. There are kids riding bikes who are sharing the lane with me when I drive down Phillips. So I agree with you that that needs to be done. One of your meetings was partnering with Clover Park School District. Based on my background of after-school programs, monitoring them, and if it's within the purview of the city, you tell me if it's not. But one thing that I did was implement food. If you put food in the after-school programs, you raise attendance. We raised attendance, and we captured some of those kids who are in school. And when they leave, they have no food. They have nothing to eat. So all of the school programs that I monitored, we implemented food for those two things. Get kids off the street and feed the ones who have no food. So that was my second one. If it's in the purview of the city council, which I don't know, but I heard you guys say you're gonna partner with them. So, and the third one is pretty simple. I think in twenty twenty-one, we need to focus on making sure all of the citizens of Lakewood are vaccinated.
Thank you. For the final question, we have Deputy Mayor Wayland.
Good evening, Ms. Davis. Thank you for joining us tonight. As you know, we have many wonderful and qualified candidates, and we are asking each one, what makes you the one we should pick at this time in our history?
Well, why now? I just spent the last four years training my administrator at my company to take over for me. I spent two years active training, practical application. I spent two years observing what she did and correcting and, and using it as a training opportunity. I never looked at it like she did anything wrong ever. If she didn't know something, that's my fault, and it's a training opportunity. But I've gotten to the point now where she's taken over. And I am in, dropped by once or twice a month for an hour or so. But that's it. So now for me is because now is when I want a new challenge. I want to commit to something new long-term. I've had a lot of challenges in my professional career, and I've learned from all of them. And I'd like to commit to this challenge long-term. And I bring a diverse background. I mean, there's a lot of stuff I've learned along the way that I feel like I can share, but I'm running out of time, and so I can't share it. But I have lots of stories I can tell you guys. I have common sense. I know when to talk, and I know when to listen. I'm a great problem solver. When I commit to something, I'm all in. I have the unique ability to hit the ground running. I can jump right in the middle, or I can start a project from scratch. I'm adaptable and flexible. I'm easy to get along with. I'm also great at networking. And I don't know if this is important or not, but I'm fully vaccinated. I've had both my shots because we are frontline workers at my company.
Thank you. So thank you. And now you have thirty seconds for a short wrap-up.
Okay, I, you know, I really thought about this for a long time because even if you don't pick me, I want you to remember me. Is that who I am? So in the words of the late, great Ruth Bader Ginsburg, she said, "To make life a little better for people less fortunate than you, that's what I think a meaningful life is. One lives not just for oneself, but for one's community." And that's always rang true from me. So I figure, why make up the words when I have them? And they're perfect, and they're exactly who I am. So I look forward to working with the city council. That's who I am. If you want it, ask for it. I want you to pick me.
Well, thank you for being with us tonight, taking the time to participate in the process, and for your willingness to step forward to work for your community.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
How do I do this?
So our next applicant is Sue Kiel Peterson. Next applicant is Sue Kiel-Petersen. Getting feedback on your keyboard, Jason. See a picture, but there we go. Ms. Peterson, welcome.
Thank you very much.
You have a two-minute opening, followed by five two-minute questions from council and thirty-second close. So the next two minutes are yours.
Thank you so much to all of you. I so appreciate this opportunity. I enjoyed watching your council meeting and. I logged off early because I thought you were announcing the interview questions and I didn't want to feel like I was cheating by listening in. So now I have them. Everybody has them. So I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about my personal background, so you can get acquainted with who I am. My father's family immigrated from Germany. Before he was born, so that makes me a second-generation U.S. citizen. And I believe that this family history instilled in me a desire for hard work and an appreciation for the opportunities. To achieve the American dream here. I feel incredibly lucky to have had lots of opportunities to make my way in the world. My mother's side. In Washington goes back to the mid-1800s. I'm a fifth-generation Washingtonian. I've lived in this state all my life, beginning at a fish hat tree in the Columbia River Gorge. And then off to college and work and raising my family. I was often required to move around for work and family, and that gave me opportunities. To make many friends and observe many styles of community building. And I want to tell you some of the places. Well, this, I think this is an exhaustive list of all the places I've lived in Washington. But it'll give you a sense of my background, I think. In alphabetical order, Aberdeen, Bainbridge Island, Bellingham, Carson, Cook. Cook is where I grew up. Claylock, Lakewood, of course. Olalla, Olympia, Riparia, Seattle, Starbuck. Most people don't know where Starbuck is. It's very small. Stevenson, where I went to high school, University Place, Wenatchee, and White Salmon, where my mom grew up.
Ms. Peterson, we're gonna have to move to question number one now.
Oh, okay. All right.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, good evening, Ms. Peterson. That. What skills, talent, or diversity of background would you bring to the city council?
Thank you for that. My educational background is very well-suited to a city council position in Lakewood. In particular, my master's degree in public administration. This program. At the UW. Aimed to prepare students for responsible involvement in government policy, development, and implementation. I was among those chosen for the first cohort of the Executive MPA Program at the University of Washington in 2003. And I'm proud to have earned this degree while also working full-time. As a single mother of two elementary school children. And I consider that now and know that I could not have done it during COVID. I feel very, very concerned for the parents out there trying to. Work and educate their children at the same time. I grew up in a family that was loving and fun, but not wealthy. So I had to earn my way through college for my bachelor's degree. And that means I worked at all kinds of jobs among all kinds of people. I have practical experience from many different walks of life, walking my way from waitress to fish biologist to environmental regulator. To a power contracts manager, learning all along the way, which was, I love to learn. I truly enjoy getting to know people from all walks of life and learning from them. I'm no stranger to this glow of hard knocks, I'm sorry to say.
I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to move.
Oh, my gosh, really? I practiced this, but I must have slowed down. Okay, fine.
Mr. Bulkey. Well, excuse me. Where is question number two, Ms. Moss?
Yeah. Good evening, Ms. Peterson. My question to you is how would the aforementioned attributes? Help you to be an effective council member on day one?
Thank you. Well, I've pursued a diverse work history over my career, which I was starting to tell you in the last question. This allowed me to hit the ground running in many areas. I could come to the city council and just be ready to roll. With a lot of skills to apply to your purposes. For example, policy analysis and decision-making, facilitating, conducting meetings and other public events. Promoting good communication. I'm good at writing and speaking. Writing proposals, reports. I'm a quick study in areas that I might have missed. And I'm always looking to learn more and do better. Living across all of Washington makes me want to protect and cherish our incredible natural beauty while also making sure. That our friendly and diverse people are able to seek good educations and earn a good livings. The Lakewood City Council is a great platform for achieving these goals for real people in our community, close in.
Thank you. And now we'll go to question number three with Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson, what is your vision for Lakewood?
Well, this question was an interesting one for me, and I just had to. Say simply, I actually like Lakewood the way it is. I think it's a pretty nice place. The things I appreciate are sort of an organic evolution of residential areas. You know, there aren't a lot of cookie-cutter. Places in Lakewood, and I really appreciate that. And we have industrial and commercial areas that. Could be thriving better without COVID, but it's just a wonderful mix of different uses. I love the parks and natural areas for recreation. I'd like Lakewood to continue on its path of inclusiveness. Transparent government, which I must congratulate all of you on that. You do a great job. And achieving the goals of the city, the community, the participants.
Thank you. Now we go to Councilmember Farmer.
Good evening, Ms. Peterson. So what are the top three priorities you think the city council should focus on in 2021?
Well, 2021 being the year that it is, there are a lot of things I would like to talk about, but I'm only going to focus on COVID. So number one, reopening these schools is just critical for our children and their families. I think that is, would be my number one goal. They're suffering. The children are not leading normal lives and their social. Development is compromised. The parents are having to do an awful lot. Number two would be an economic recovery from COVID for all the businesses that have been shut down and helping them get going again. And then number three would be assuring that we all get the vaccines. That for the people who want the vaccine, I think it just has to happen sooner rather than later. So those are the three that I, I would like to see happen.
Thank you. We now move to Deputy Mayor Wayland for the final question.
Good evening, Sue. Good to see you.
Hi, Mr. Wayland.
This is the sales pitch question. So we've heard a little bit about your background and some of your interests in coming onboard the city council. So sell us on, with all the great candidates we have before us, and it's humbling to be honest. Why you? At this time in our history. So why you? Why now compared to the others? What do you bring?
Great question. So what I believe I have to offer is readiness. And a very broad experience behind me that was purposeful. I chose to seek challenges. I chose to move around to different. Areas of, in my profession, learn. I've, I've just really. Made a point of trying to always learn and grow and. That put me in, not just, I'm not just talking about intellectual growth. I'm talking about. Learning how to interact with others, how to respect others and, and learn how to. Judge the communication tools that work best with different kinds of people from different walks of life or different. Backgrounds. So that I see as one of my best strengths. I feel I need to warn you that I'm shameless, absolutely shameless about asking questions. I always ask questions, hopefully not in an annoying way. But I like to clarify roles and expectations. I like to make sure that everybody is on the same page and that we're a cohesive. Machine getting things done. I consider myself a truth seeker and a. A problem solver. Those are, those are very deep characteristics in me. So I'm willing, able, and I would be honored, so honored to, to have a role like this.
Thank you. Thank you. And now you have 30 seconds for a short wrap-up.
Well, what I, what I want to say in closing is that. I mentioned your transparency is just stellar, and so I had a chance to read the other. I didn't realize I could watch the other candidates online, but I saw the end of Kim Davies there. Reading all those statements, you know, cover letters and resumes, I have to say. I don't envy any of you for what you have to do next, because what a tough choice. Oh, my gosh. So, so what I really want to say is. I wish you the best in your decision-making. I don't know what, what your needs are, frankly, so I can't really say how I fit with your needs. But what I do offer is, if you want somebody who can just pitch in and get a lot done and, and you don't have to train me for much, I wouldn't think I can do it. And I'd be happy to do that, to serve you, the council, and also our community.
Well.
It's a pleasure to be in an interview with all of you.
Well, we'd like to thank you for your participation tonight and especially for your willingness to step forward to serve the community. A big commitment just to step forward, and we appreciate it greatly. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much. Good luck to you.
Thank you. One-minute breather.
Minutes only get, that's right.
Yeah.
I had someone deliver cupcakes from Washington, DC to me from this incredible cupcake studio, so I will eat it now. And if you were with me, I would share.
And we get virtual cupcakes. Thanks a lot.
Exactly.
All right. Got a little, need a little leave time to bring our next applicant in. That will be Kimmy Gin. Good evening.
Good evening to all of you.
Well, the sound check work. The protocol tonight will be that we'll give you two minutes for an opening statement. It'll be five questions. Of two minutes each, and then a thirty-second close. And if I interrupt you, it's an attempt like a referee, to be fair. So that everybody has the same time and we'll make sure you keep to that timeframe. So without further ado, the next two minutes is yours.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening to all of you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and city council members. My name is Kimmy Irene Gin, and I am excited to be a candidate for our Lakewood City Council position number five. Service is embedded and embrace value that I have maintained throughout my life. I was born at Madigan General Hospital. I was reared in a military service environment. My stepfather was a career officer. And my mother served as the chief librarian for over 30 years at Fort Lewis. I grew up in Tacoma, was an honor graduate from Wilson High School, where I served as the first female and first African-American student body president. I went on to complete my degrees in multicultural education, and I have taught from kindergarten to the university levels. You've had a chance to review my resume, so you know professionally, I have served as a teacher. A school administrator, project director, program officer, nonprofit fundraiser, diversity facilitator. I am a performing African-American storyteller, and I own a small business, a multicultural consulting company. So clearly, this demonstrates a variety of professional skills that can be an asset to executing the duties. Of a city council person here in our wonderful city of Lakewood. I look forward to sharing more of my relevant skills as we continue this wonderful interview process.
Thank you. We now move to Mr. Branstadter for the first question.
Good evening, Ms. Gin.
Good evening.
You tell us what skills, talent, or diversity of background would you bring to the city council?
Okay, well, I'd like to begin by saying I'm a team player. And I understand the value of respect and honor the uniquenesses, the differences, the unique differences we all possess, but I celebrate. That which we have in common. I consider myself to be ethical and practicing good moral judgment in making policy and procedural decisions. I do not hear you, but I listen to you. I work toward consensus with an equity lens and a sense of fairness. I have served for and do serve a variety of diversity-focused organizations. Through my multicultural consulting small business, I address a myriad of equity-focused areas racially. LGBTQ, gender, disability, poverty, the underserved, and the marginalized. Okay.
I, I'm sorry. We now move to. Ms. Moss for the second question.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Jen, how would the unmentioned attributes? Help you be an effective council member on day one?
Well, I certainly want to state that I'm proud to live in Lakewood, a city that represents community with a wealth of diversity in its residents. My diversity-focused experiences in the areas of education and social justice. Business and community activism would be helpful to our city council. And making those kinds of decisions that reflect a true understanding of the impact. Of executing all kinds of policy with an equity lens that yields fairness to all of our residents. You know, some of our communities need more, and some of our communities need less. And so we very, have to be very conscientious in the choices that we make and the decisions that we make that affect all of our residents in an equitable way. Because if we just say everybody's equal, then we're not taking care of the residents that need more. And we're giving too much to those who need less. So we have to, we have to look at decision-making and policy and procedures with a true equity lens. I would also like to talk about something called RTQ. Those of you who know me, oftentimes I have to give out some initials. Well, I will be the kind of council person that will always be saying RTQ to my colleagues. What does RTQ? It means to raise the question. Is our council making decisions that are fair? Does it meet the equity lens of quality delivery for the services to our residents? So when you hear me say RTQ.
So when you hear me say RTQ in a council meeting, that means I want to raise the question. We need to be conscientious. We need to be fair. We need to be equitable. And we need to make sure we meet the needs of all of our residents here in Lakewood.
Thank you.
Thank you. For question number three, we move to Councilmember Bulkey.
Hello, Ms. Ginn. Uh, what is your vision for Lakewood?
Um, I have a great opportunity to serve on a board called the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition. And, and for the past two years, I've had the honor to serve on the planning for the Martin Luther King's celebrations. And what I have found that just with those two organizations and entity, entities and the teamwork, there's a real good sense of collaboration and collectiveness and execution. So one of the things I would like to see as a vision for our city is I'd like to see us form a citywide consortium where we have the city council, where we have the school district, where we have our higher education institutions, where we have our police department, where we have JBLM, where we have our business and faith communities all coming together to establish one, one unified message of when we say diversity and inclusivity in the city of Lakewood, that we're on the same page, that our messaging, our messaging is united. We talk about community and community is also the word of unity. And if we can find that kind of consortium where we're all on the same page when we use these words, that we message it in such a way that it's unified. And if we could come up with a model, a model, and I'm saying MOTTO, not a model, but a MOTTO, a motto, that, that clearly demonstrates our, our inclusiveness here in the city of Lakewood. Now, I don't know if any of you have ever been to Seattle. I'm sure you have. If you've been to Virginia Beach, I don't know if you've been there. If you've been to the city of Chicago, you know, they had this theme at one time in Seattle that had the pigs. In Chicago, it had the cows. And in Virginia, in, in Virginia Beach, they had the mermaids. But all over the city, this became a modeling of, of, of showing enthusiasm and messaging for a city. I would love for our city to come up with a model. Maybe it would be a dove. I don't know. Maybe it would be hands together. But so as you go through the city of Lakewood, you would see the model, the consortium unified message that we are a city that values diversity and values inclusivity. I'd love to see that. And I'd also like to see us expand what I just saw recently with your special meeting. It was build your better here. Well, let's build our better here in such a way that wherever you go out the city, all throughout the city, you see these demonstrative messages of how we value diversity in this city. And I'd love to see that happen. I'd love to be a councilwoman that helps make that happen.
Thank you. Now move to Ms. Farmer.
Good evening, Ms. Ginn. Um, what are the top three priorities you believe the city council should focus on in 2021?
Wow. I mean, how can you not say COVID-19? I mean, to me, uh, by conquering COVID-19, it would solve so many of the challenges that we've had in 2020 and, and continuing in 2021. And one of the things around conquering COVID-19 is user friendly access to vaccinations. If we can figure out some sort of system, it just seems to me with having JBLM so close by and, and the sizable amount of personnel there, we might be able to deploy some of the troops to, to set up some of the vaccination stations around our city of Lakewood to help us vaccinate those. Uh, in fact, uh, all of us need to finally get it, but we know we have some priorities that we need to take care of. But for me, the number one priority is conquering COVID-19 and vaccination is crucial. Secondly, under that, that piece, when I say COVID-19, I, I, I guess I'm saying my priorities around health. I am very concerned about opening our schools in the fall with so many COVID-19 fatigue teachers, other staff, students and family. And I'd like the city to come up with a way of helping with the opening of schools. And maybe we need to have a big parade at the opening of schools and make people feel good as we're opening up the schools and have a celebration that we've conquered at least keeping our schools closed and having some fun. It's very similar to what we did at Christmas. I mean, that was so much fun going through the town center because we couldn't do the traditional parade. But I think we need to have to find ways to deal with the socially emotional kinds of issues. And I know that it also talks about having professional help. So we do need to have some coordination with our mental health providers to make sure that the, the services are available. Secondly, would be economic growth. We have a wonderful opportunity. People can't afford to live in Seattle. They're coming further south and Lakewood would be a great place to live. And small business and other businesses, I believe our tax base is much lower than other places in King County. So we should be inviting more businesses and, and encouraging folks to establish more businesses here. And thirdly, oh, my passion.
Going to have to move, move on to the next.
Real quick, most opportu, more opportunities for youth, more opportunity for youth opportunities. I think the QFC should be a skating rink. Okay, next question.
As you will.
Well, you, you almost answered my question. So we have so many great candidates. And if you were sitting in our position having to weigh and reflect, give us the pitch, Kimmy. Why you amidst the other candidates at this time in our history?
Jason, I want you to ask me the question just like it's on the piece of paper. Ask me directly.
Why you? Why now, Kimmy?
Why not?
There you go.
Why not me? In all seriousness, in all seriousness. I do feel I have the professional skills and I certainly have the personal passion for helping to make a difference. I'm honest. I'm dependable. I know how to multitask and I want to serve. And why now? We're about to celebrate the, the 25 years of having this wonderful city. I want to be part of the next 25 years. I don't want to just come on board and be here till December 31st and then running, I want to run the election and be here, if I can be here for the next 25 years. I want to see our city grow to its full capacity. I want to support truly a better Lakewood. No. You know, you know, the old Sears thing that says good, better, best. I want us to be the best, the best Lakewood.
Thank you. Thank you. And now you have 30 seconds for a quick wrap up.
Well, I want to thank you again for, for this time to share. I know that there's many candidates seeking this position and I hope that I prove to be worthy of a candidate you would select. I'm not a miracle worker, but I am an action maker. Let me work my action. Permit me to serve. Thank you so much.
Well, we like to thank you for joining us tonight and participating and, and thank you even, uh, even more for being willing to participate and step up and serve your community. So we appreciate that. And thanks again for being with us tonight. Take a one, about a one minute breather is people shift. So Ms. Farmer confirms her availability. We will move forward. There. All right, Ms. Schumacher, our next person up is Patty Bell.
Hi. Is my video not showing? There we go.
We have a P. There you are.
I got it.
All right, Ms. Bell, uh, we have a two minute opening statement time and then we'll have five, two minutes and a 30 second wrap.
Okay. Should I go ahead and start? I missed what you said.
But when I, and, uh, when we give you the go, you'll have your two minutes. But I just want to apologize in advance if, if I cut you off. We're trying to make it fair. Kind of like an athletic deal where everybody gets the same amount of time. Uh, so the next two minutes is yours.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers for the opportunity to interview this evening. My name is Patty Bell. I'm a Washington native who grew up in Port Orchard, then attended PLU and stayed on this side of the bridge ever since. I remember coming to Lakewood before it was Lakewood. As a child, I would come to McCord to pick up my grandfather after flying in. And in later years as a college student to shop and get some great international food. It's been amazing to see how Lakewood has grown. Almost three years ago, my husband, daughter and I started to look for our forever home. Consistently Lakewood kept checking off all the boxes. Convenient retail, walkable neighborhoods, parks, events, access to different transportation. The list kept going. And we did buy in Lakewood and a nice addition to our move was that my parents recently decided to give up the bridge and they now call Lakewood home. Currently, I work in the mayor's office in one of the largest cities in the state. I manage a national award winning communications team that produces and designs content for video, photography, online, and all of our social channels. We support the mayor, city council, and 10 city departments. My leadership and organize organizational skills and creative skills are flexed daily. I've served on boards and committees that range from diversity and equity issues to how to better connect communities with local cable franchises. I'm currently serving my second appointment on the Lakewood City Arts Commission and I love it. It's been an engaging space with other local leaders, all who want to continue to elevate Lakewood. I'm ready to continue my community service by serving on the Lakewood City Council. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity to put my skills and experience to work for my neighbors and community.
Thank you. And for our first question, we have Councilmember Branstad.
Good evening, Ms. Bell. Um, what skills, talent, or diversity of background would you bring to the city council?
Sure. I just went over a few things that talk about my skills and talents and my diversity of background is vast. As a Mexican woman, married to a black man from Brooklyn, raising a biracial daughter, my family looks like a Lakewood family. I have an extensive background in communications and media while working in government. And I will bring perspective to the council that understands how important our communication with residents and stakeholders is and how that impacts all the aspect, all aspects of life in Lakewood. And having been a public servant for many years in a staff capacity, I also understand the difference between the role of a legislator and the role of staff and how that partnership is essential for accomplishing our goals. Over the course of my career, I have come to value the power of collaboration, assuming good intent and working with others in good faith in advance, shared to advance, shared goals while being open to deliberation and compromise. I'm not someone that's going to come in and try to shake things up, but I'm also not someone that wants to be a fly on the wall. My background has taught me that to get things done, and in this case, to improve the lives of our residents and the quality of our community, you need to be a team player.
Thank you. Uh, our next question comes from Ms. Moss.
Thank you. Ms. Bell, my question to you is how would the unmentioned attributes help you be an effective council member from day one?
Sure. So I'm ready to hit the ground running because of over a decade of experience as a leader in local government. That background gives me a distinct advantage and perspective on how government departments and policy work and how they intertwine in long-term goals and also in day-to-day operations. There would be no need for a learning curve or a honeymoon stage. I'm ready to be a team player and effective council member on day one. I've worked with people that come from all kinds of cultural backgrounds, ages, abilities and perspectives. And I know that one of my strengths on the council would be bringing people together, building consensus and moving Lakewood forward. I'm the candidate who works with the mayor, city council members and staff daily to deliver resident, um, results to our residents. I know how government works, what is possible, what falls into our area of responsibility and what to expect and how to move forward. This is unmatched experience means that Lakewood residents get seven effective, hardworking, knowledgeable city council members on my first day. Thank you.
We now move to Councilmember Bulkey.
Ms. Bell, what is your vision for the city of Lakewood?
Sure. So when I think about my vision for Lakewood, I think about how we want our city to be described to friends or family when residents tell them about the place they live. I want them to be honest and to be genuinely proud to tell people about Lakewood and to invite them to come to visit or relocate. I want Lakewood to be a place for everyone. That means safe and vibrant neighborhoods and economic development plan to recruit a wide variety of jobs for a wide variety of residents and a place where residents and businesses feel connected, not just to each other, but to community we choose to call home. So making that happen starts with telling Lakewood's story on a regional, state and national level. By more strategically and effectively telling our story, we can share all the good things that are happening in our community, our plans for the future and to put Lakewood on the map as a place where residents and businesses want to call home. And as people and communities start flocking to Lakewood, we need to share that good news and those success stories. Lakewood's government is what I call a humble servant. They do a great job in serving and providing, but they don't tell the story or brag about the success and the positive growth. We need to do a little bragging and that will in turn into a recruitment tool for us. I know that we are competing for airtime to tell our story. We have to get innovative and then commit to long-term plan with metrics to measure our success. I'm prepared to work with my colleagues on the city council to continue to make investments in how we communicate in order to attract and retain residents and businesses so that we can work toward a vision for Lakewood as a thriving and safe community with strong public services and amenities that everyone can enjoy.
Thank you. Uh, question number four comes from Councilmember Farmer.
Good evening, Ms. Bell. So what are the top three priorities that you think the city council should focus on in 2021?
Sure. So first and foremost, I really think that we need to ensure that we guide our community through a successful recovery from the impacts of the pandemic. Um, and that starts with the focus on our capabilities in regarding, in regards to public safety, economic development and communication. If these are our priorities, we'll get there and expand what's possible in Lakewood. Overall, these priorities are at the core of everything that we do and they're also in line with the council's current goals and priorities. I would like to advocate for organizations like the Washington Military Alliance to come back into being and the State Department of Commerce restoring a position for defense industry. This can ensure off-base jobs for Lakewood in defense, tech and manufacturing. Another really big thing I would love to support and advocate for would be tax increment financing. Forty other states have implemented some form of increment financing. And as we look to help our economy recover from COVID, now is the time for Washington to join those states. Lakewood is prime for development and redevelopment. These areas remain vacant and blighted because significant public infrastructure is needed, such as utility extensions, newer plant expansions, environmental remediation, and so much more. Increment financing would be a win for Lakewood's economic growth. And making public safety a priority means investing in programs that help those that are vulnerable in their community, supporting our social services and supporting our police department. Public safety ties into so many aspects of life and I believe the role of the council is to support the work the city staff is doing to achieve the success in this area. And I was personally very interested in the Build Your Better Here campaign and I want to see what it can become when it builds more momentum. By advocating for the use of lodging tax funds, we can expand and grow the campaign. And then when we empower our communicators and ensure that they have the resource they need to get feedback from results, increase turnout at community events, answer their questions and address their concerns, we'll build trust for our residents as well as our partners, which we can then leverage to deliver results and improve the quality of life for everyone that calls Lakewood home.
Thank you. And for the final question, uh, we have Deputy Mayor Wayland.
Good evening, Patty. Good to see you. As you know from the questions, this is kind of the, the sales pitch, given the number of well qualified candidates we have. So why Patty Bell? Why now?
So I, I have roots here. I am proud to be raising my family in Lakewood and I have the experience that's needed to give back and contribute to the initiatives, the policy, the programs and the services that our city provides. With my professional background as a communicator and local government leader, there won't be a steep learning curve with me. And I'm passionate about Lakewood, about improving the lives of our residents and reaching our potential. I'm not a perennial politician or an opportunist. I'm only in this to serve my neighbors and help make Lakewood an even more better place. And I'm not the kind of person that's going to throw a wrench into things when I don't get my way. My desire is to help guide our community through this really difficult time so that we can recover. My desire is to help guide our community through this really difficult time so that we can recover and come back stronger. I'm ready to serve as your colleague on the Lakewood City Council. And to work with you all collaboratively and in good faith to continue the great work you've already begun.
Thank you. And the effective communicator you are, you have gone through the questions more, answers more effectively than anyone timewise. But you have 30 seconds to wrap up and give us your final pitch.
I would love to. So when I saw this position open up, I felt like something was telling me that this is what I was meant to do in this moment. I've had the opportunity to work as a public servant for many years, but I know that I'm ready to take the next step. And I'm committed to making this a priority. My philosophy of public service is that we can always do more and be better for the families that choose to live here. I appreciate you all and I thank you all for serving our community. And I'm ready to get to work and build a better here in Lakewood.
Well, thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight. We appreciate your participation and we even. Greatly appreciate your willingness to step forward to serve your community.
Thank you.
Thanks again for joining us.
Thanks.
So cut a couple of minutes. Let's take a five-minute comfort break and come back at eight. Sixteen for the next person, which who will be David Howarth. I'm sure everybody's back on here. All right. Everyone settled in and good to go. Ms. Schumacher, would you invite David Howarth in?
Hello. How's everybody doing?
Good evening, Mr. Howard. Welcome. We will give you two minutes for an opening statement. We'll have five questions of two minutes each and a 30-second wrap-up. And apologize in advance if I cut you off. We're trying to keep the time fair and. We may need to move on to the next question. So.
No problem, no problem.
That is background. The next two minutes are yours.
Fantastic. I will keep it brief and I will move on as I need, but first of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Wayland and the whole city council. My name is David Howarth and I would be honored to serve my community on the Lakewood City Council. I believe we need smart, passionate people willing to use the privilege of government to advocate for others. We live in an era of a pandemic, growing wealth and income inequality. A justice system which overwhelmingly puts people of color in jail. An economic system which is great at production, but unable to secure everyone's material needs. To meet these needs at the moment, we need bold action. We need people willing to take risks. And now I'm going to move on to question number one, if that's all right.
Well, we will ask the question by Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, Mr. Howard. What skills, talent? Or diversity of background would you bring to the city council?
Yeah. So first of all, Washington is my home and I've been lucky to have lived all around it. We have some of the most amazing people. Kind, smart, creative, passionate people. We have some of the richest people in the world and some of the worst off. I was raised by my grandmother, who also took in and supported my father. My grandmother managed a retirement home. I volunteered at a time by time to time. My father had a terrible workplace accident and fell on drugs. He was made mentally ill and abusive. And I say that not as a sob story, but as an origin to my realization that in my household, I lived two lives. On one side, I held an extreme privilege. I had all the nice things. I ate well. I had a great education. I got access to this and other resources solely because my community had wealth while others did not. And on the other side of that. Was the extreme gut-wrenching poverty that my father went through. I can't tell you how much time I spent in methadone clinics or at all the drug dealers I met or the strange, horrible places I was left. I learned a lot from those experiences. Especially that not only are opportunities exponential, but so is the corrosive force of poverty. Being poor makes you worse off over time and prevents you from growing wealth. I carried all that with me. My family was into politics and I idolized presidents such as FDR and Teddy Roosevelt, Lincoln. I realized we needed leaders willing to stand up for principles and use the government to solve problems. I was inspired by Bernie Sanders. It is run in 2016. I knew about these great leaders that achieved amazing things and Sanders gave me the confidence that normal working-class people. Can stand up and change their country for the better. My goal is to make sure that no one else has to go through the same things I went through. I really believe the greatest country on earth, in the greatest country on earth, we can do a lot better. After high school, I moved across the state. I started online classes and I'll be graduating from Central Washington University in June. I volunteered for various democratic campaigns. I was part of a student legislative advocacy committee. That participated in the first instance of same-day voter registration and voting in Washington. I believe that was worth doing, work worth doing, but I take a lot of pride in my regular work. I worked at a factory in Algonah, Amazon Fresh in Kent, Office Depot, Fred Meyers. And now I work as a fire technician at a disaster restoration business in Tacoma. And that's what I had for question.
All right. We'll move to question number two with Ms. Moss.
Thank you. How would the unformentioned attributes? Help you be an effective council member on day one?
Yeah. Since I was young, my goal has always been to help. As I grew and learned, I realized the boldest action you can do is to be open-minded, listen and elevate others. I know the importance of dedication, passion, commitment and resolve. And on day one of being a city council member. I will have carried with me my dedication to our people, my passion for government, my commitment to preserving the constitution of the state, federal. State and federal government as well as the city council laws. And the resolve that the government is an institution of the people, by the people, for the people. My experience has shaped me. I understand what living paycheck to paycheck means. It means not being sure if you're going to have money to pay your bills at the end of the month. I know what a worker feels like when the job doesn't have a union and the worker has no way of expressing themselves. I've met workers dramatically underpaid, these people barely making the minimum wage and without hero pay, especially as they worked through the pandemic risking their lives. I've seen workers hurt themselves and get fired without any medical support. I've seen workers sexually harassed at work, including my own partner. One woman I had met had a man take an inappropriate photo of her bottom and tease it and tease her with it, showing it to other men. And I asked her if she told anyone about it and she said no, and then asked me not to tell anybody. This person was a welder and a mother and a human, but she was not given her basic human respect. It reminds me of President Theodore Roosevelt when he was in New York Legislature. In 1883, traveled to the cigar tenants of New York. He had heard reports that the workers were being severely treated severely poorly. When Roosevelt saw this, he called for change. It wasn't a partisan issue. He wasn't a believer in government regulation at this point. And by experiencing what others did, others went through, he had a change of heart.
Going to have to move on to the third question now with Mr. Bulkey.
Mr. Howard, what is your vision for the city of Lakewood?
Yeah. I believe the United States and Lakewood is a shining city on the hill that Kennedy and Reagan spoke of. The values of this nation. The values this nation was founded on are freedom, democracy and the ability to build wealth and pursue our own ends. Now, this doesn't mean we can't discuss wars, racism, xenophobia, sexism. In fact, when we do this, we start to understand that a lot of people can't feel pride in a country that makes them feel like a second-class citizen. And there's so much anger and despair and strife in the public and I think most of us feel it. In today's political sphere, people are really upset about the status quo. And we've seen this in the Tea Party, the 99%ers, the George Floyd protests, the Capitol Hill rioters. Populist candidates like Bernie Sanders and Donald Trump have gained significant advantage in party politics. And I believe it all stems from a deep economic divide. Our middle class has suffered greatly and the benefits of the changed economy have not gone to everyday workers. Now, the balance between good governance and political popularity has always been tough to traverse. But my ideology is guided by compassion. And my vision for Lakewood and the world comes from the 1972 presidential candidate named George McGovern. I'm sure you guys are too young to remember who that is, but he ran against Nixon in 72 and lost in landslide. And later in his life, he wrote a book called What It Means to be a Democrat. And while I understand and respect the nonpartisan nature of the council, I really liked his definition. And if we change the word Democrat to citizen of Lakewood, then I think it's a perfect example of my vision. He says above all, being a citizen of Lakewood, in my case, means having compassion for others. It means putting the government to work for people who need it. It means using all available tools to provide good healthcare and education, job opportunities, safe neighborhoods, a healthy environment, a promising future. It means standing up for those who have been kept down, whether they are Native Americans or African-Americans, women, immigrants or the homeless. It means taking care of the mentally ill, seniors, of vulnerable children, of veterans.
I've moved to the next question with.
No problem.
Hi, Mr. Howard. So what are the top three priorities you think the city council should focus on in 2021?
Well, I mean, I have plenty of ideas that would make Lakewood a better community, but as we've stepped into 2021, the pandemic is still raging. It's exposed some of our greatest weaknesses as a country, a failing healthcare system, the inability to store medical supplies in case of emergency. Failing the elderly, the sick and the essential employees that have always been essential, remain essential, even after the two months of thanks and hero pay ended. But to deal with the pandemic, we really need to get vaccines out so that we can start opening the economy. Even once the economy is open though, and we go quote-unquote back to normal. We have to recognize that back to normal for a lot of people was insufferable. And this insufferableness has led to a deeper despair in our country. And there are so many things that we can do. I mean, you said three. Starters, I think we should raise the minimum wage to 15 and tie it with inflation. I think we need a 21st century infrastructure. That way we can definitely compete with other countries. I think a citywide rent control would be great. I think far too often tenants have had their rents raised at unacceptable levels. But ultimately, we can agree or disagree on tactics. But we have to agree that there are huge issues facing the American people and that action must be taken to address these.
Okay, we're going to have to move to question number five with Mr. Wayland.
Evening, David. Thank you for coming tonight.
Evening. Thank you so much.
You bet. So we have a number of candidates, as you probably witnessed, that have a variety of background and experiences. And this question is, what makes you the standout candidate for us or this position in Lakewood at this time?
So why me? Why now? When I immediately read this or hear that question, I think about all the people that have served the community and have left behind a legacy I could only dream of accumulating. I want politics to be a noble profession. Politics can be dirty and adversarial. And I'm sure you have before you more qualified candidates. But the legacy of this country has been of nobodies becoming somebody's by following their passion. I'm not a lawyer or doctor, but my passion is politics. My goal for the last decade has been to run for office, the moment I could. And I think the choice to run for office or seek appointment means taking on the public's trust. As Bernie Sanders said, "Not me, us." I think I will bring a new perspective to the council. I have a deep connection with the opioid crisis. I've worked mostly warehouse jobs. I understand the struggle of the worker. I have family members that served in the military and that work in the medical profession. I have elderly family that struggles to get by on social security. Everyone I meet, I connect with and connect with, I try to learn and take away something. I carry all of these experiences with me. And if you are dedicated to the material needs of our people, I really believe I'm the right person for the job.
Thank you. And thank you. You're right on cue for your 30-second close.
Great. So I'll be short. My name is David Howard. I'm the son of a drug addict. I'm a social democrat that believes in an egalitarian future. My dedication has been toward politics and my goal is to make sure no child goes through the same things I do. If you choose me, I will be dedicated to the job and making our community better. Thank you so much.
Well, we thank you for joining us tonight and taking the time out to participate and. And again, we really appreciate your willingness to step forward to offer your service to the community.
Of course. Thank you so much.
And have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Goodbye.
Next up is Rhea Johnson-Covington. Good evening, Rhea. Get a sound check here.
Hello.
Oh.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's working. I think you've been watching so you know the drill, two minutes, five two-minute questions and 30-second wrap-up. So without further ado, Rhea, welcome. And the next two minutes are yours.
Thank you kindly, Mayor. Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, and Lakewood City Council, good evening. It's the final stretch. But who am I? My name is Rhea Johnson-Covington, and I want to be the next member of this Lakewood City Council. My track record shows that I would be the best fit for this job, and I hope my interview with you tonight effectively highlights some of those reasons. I've lived in Pierce County since 1989. I lived in Lakewood for the past 20 years. My husband, Mr. Covington, is an Army veteran from North Carolina, and we live on Fairway Drive southwest. I currently work for a law office and would previously commute to Seattle via sound transit. I currently sit on two community boards focusing on healthcare, financials, and political advocacy. I lived, worked, and played in almost every area of Lakewood, from Nynza, Telacom, to Bridgeport, to Silicon, Springbrook, Gradle Lake, Woodbrook, and a few more in between. Someone's once said that Lakewood is in my DNA. And with my life experiences, I know this to be true. I am very extremely grateful for the leaders who mentored and influenced me at a pivotal point in my life, people just like you investing in people just like me. I represent resilience, persistence, hard work, and due diligence, mainly the ability to succeed in the face of difficult obstacles. My appointment to city council would be a statement, and I believe a statement you could be proud of. It would show that leadership can intentionally be in achieving its goals of inclusion and investing in our future. That's a little bit about myself. If I missed anything, let me know, please.
Thank you. Our first question comes from Councilmember Branstadter.
Yes. Good evening, Rhea. What skills, talent, or diversity of background would you bring to the city council?
I know we all have a unique talent to bring to city council. I would say most directly, it's my personal lived experience that sets me apart. I know we all have our own personal lived experience, but mine truly is a story, and I'm recognizing that. My skills include persistence and resilience. It makes me for being a very hard worker and is the key factor in my success. Dependability and quality would be my second set of skills. I have a low learning curve in which I work quickly with very few errors. Agile-efficient would probably be my third set of skills I would mention. My talents include my ability to impact cultures and engage in meaningful conversations. I also work well under pressure, and I'm aware of our impact. I do have a passion for civil service, which I've demonstrated starting off in the youth council, I believe, back in 2003, attending those meetings with you, hearing those topics, and understand the scope of the job, to my involvement to multiple community organizations today where I serve, still impacting Lakewood and other surrounding areas in South Pigeon Sound. My ability to advocate is another thing that I would like to mention because I think it's also an important thing to acknowledge. I would definitely bring ideas and leadership towards continuing to grow a robust local economy. And I think that there's a lot of cool things that are happening in Lakewood that we should be proud of.
Thank you. And question number two comes from Councilmember Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what happened here.
Mary, I just had to look, scroll, and see your face because I feel like I haven't seen you in such a long time.
No, it's good to see you. Good to see you. My question to you is how would the aforementioned, as for mentioned, attributes help you be an effective council member on day one?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Moss. It would immediately set the tone for what we value in the community. I think someone also mentioned visual communication. I think that's really what I stand for, and we have an opportunity to utilize that. I spent the last 15 years following Lakewood. I've observed and paid attention to the policy. I've advocated. I've actively advocated for services in our area. I would give immediate access and a voice to city council on behalf of underrepresentative groups, residents, working families, remote workers, growing families, and families with multicultural needs. Also, you know, I was previously a youth council member, and that is very similar to your council member today. But in my corporate day job, I am a leader facilitating conversation and implementing goals. And I think that's really an important thing because it definitely is a skill that I would provide on day one.
Thank you. We now move to Councilmember Bulkey for the next question.
Rhea, what is your vision for the city of Lakewood?
My vision for the city of Lakewood really starts with what it is today. You know my love and passion for this area. And so I just appreciate the opportunity to witness the development and the growth that this young city has accomplished in its less than 30 years. Like, it's given me a run-for-my-money accomplishments in under 30 years. But the city's current motto is a cool example, "Build Your Better Here." I mean, that's like my own testimony. Not only do we stand by developing a live-work-play region, I have personally taken this approach to my life as an example. Again, I stand proud with the development and growth that you, as leaders, have continued creating, building a better reputation through community. I mean, we're on the right path. And so that is also my vision, too. I've been to lots of vision and strategic plannings with the city, also putting the circles on the Woodbrook Industrial Park, ensuring that people had relocation options. And good job on the Habitat for Humanity thing that you guys just reviewed. I digress. But continuing a spirit of collaboration, obviously, the collaboration was a big impact with Liquid Promise, but actual items like ensuring that we keep our human service funding, ensuring that we do not have a BNO tax, and we ensure that businesses want to continue to develop in our area. I think this is definitely an opportunity to focus on business retention, also the new era of business, being agile in that approach, but also developing our local economy and giving opportunities to have dignity to work to our workforce. I think that we could prepare our community for those opportunities in advance with proper preparation.
Thank you. Now move to Councilmember Farmer for question number four.
Good evening, Ms. Johnson-Covington. What are the top three priorities you think the city council should focus on in 2021?
I am agreement with the council's current priorities. First and foremost, I guess, you know, navigating the impacts of COVID-19 and the well-being of our community. I think that's a holistic approach that we have a history of doing. That's ensuring our safety, our safety, and also ensuring the beauty of our parks. We have to be visionaries when it comes to what our community will look like, given the impacts of the pandemic. Again, my priority, if I had to name three, I definitely am a big fan of the designated funds for social services. I think that's a great way to collaborate and ensure that you are actively participating in the well-being of the whole society. So that, and one that I've been working on recently is ensuring that we have improvements in our relationship between government and community relations. I just want to be able to help and assist and be a person, be a resource for my community members, also my colleagues on city council. And again, given the pandemic and the impact it has on small businesses, just really being firm on no BNO tax works for us in Lakewood, and there are a benefit that can have a ripple effect to our community, i.e. the Woodbrook Industrial Park, Amazon, which I cannot take any responsibility for. But I did tweet Amazon during my last election that there was a wonderful place in Lakewood that they could invest in.
Right. Thank you. Now for the final question, we have Deputy Mayor Whalen.
To give me the softball question, Rhea, and I ask it to everyone, we have lots of great candidates, as you know. Tell us a little bit why you're the right one for us to choose at this time. Why you? Why now?
Imagine a young person who loses a parent at a young age only to find a few caring adults. Imagine an alternative high school student with an uncertain future graduating. Imagine a young woman living paycheck to paycheck in Telacom only to buy a home in the Waller Estates. Imagine an adult consistently trying to give back to their community they love applying to be appointed. Imagine a city council, given an opportunity, rallies behind its most vulnerable members and empowers them to succeed and live a quality life here in the city of Lakewood. I'm thankful. There's no need to imagine because that person is me. Tonight, you have the opportunity to give hopes to others who are facing some of the similar challenges. And that's why I think it should be me. I hope you also think that it would be me also.
Well, thank you. And we've now come to the time for your short wrap-up.
Okay, so I just want to say first and foremost, thank you to those who believed in me, those who continuously support me, and those considering a vote for my appointment. I thank you, Lakewood City Council, for the sacrifices you and your family make in order to serve. I acknowledge humbly that this is an opportunity to take an intentional action supported by the city's mission and values in inclusiveness. This is an opportunity to add to your team, hire a teammate, while consciously ensuring adequate representation of our whole community. My life is an example of when a city and its leaders take interest in you and is successful in doing so. I learned the value of community at a young age, and I understand what's at stake. Remember, it's in my DNA. It's a privilege to apply, and I thank you for your consideration. I look forward to working with each and every single one of you. Good evening.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight, Rhea, and participating in this process. Thank you for what you do in the community and your willingness to step forward and offer your services to your fellow Lakewoodians. So thanks for being here tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ames, let's do a sound check here. You're on mute.
Now's the time for all good men to come to the aid of their country, city, et cetera.
Okay, it works. So I see you've been online with us, so I've probably heard this spiel before, but you have a two-minute opening statement, five questions with a two-minute time allocation for each and 30-second wrap-up. And without further ado, the next two minutes is yours.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I trust the council members have done their due diligence, reading everyone's resumes and letters of intent. Therefore, I waive my introductory statement. The 30 seconds at the end will be plenty. Let me get everybody back to their families a few minutes earlier. Like I said at the very first City of Lakewood Council meeting I attended 15 years ago, if something is important enough, it should be able to be summed up in less than a minute. Let's start the lightning round.
Okay. Thank you. The first question will be from Councilmember Branstadter.
Good evening, Mr. Ames. What skills, talent, or diversity of background would you bring to the city council?
Thank you, Councilmember Branstadter. No one among the candidates has more varied local leadership experience than me. You've seen on my resume the wide and extensive experience I have in the city, schools, community, and military work. These are the folders of the agencies, organizations, and causes that I'm involved in, the Marine Corps League and the Pacific Neighborhood Association, Housing Task Force, Sign Code, PSA, time forbids as well as humility. But let me give you a timely paradigm. A couple days ago, I attended a historic Eagle Scout ceremony in person where I presented awards to Eagle Scouts, all of which were female. They were given good citizenship awards. It was an amazing experience for me, that standing on the cusp of history and seeing, yes, fate marches on. Also, the next morning, I attended the coffee with the mayor to see the city managers, stated the city presentation. It's always packed with crucial information to us. Earlier today, just an hour ago, well, a couple hours ago, I attended the CDBG Home meeting, and I'll cover that a little bit later. Tomorrow, I have an appointment to interview St. Clair for a Suburban Times story about the local impact of COVID and vaccinations. Then, I have a Springbrook Connections meeting followed by the Lakewood Sister Cities Association. Thank you very much, Councilmember Branstadter. I represent a half of Lakewood that has never been represented before. They trust me. I can unify them. Then, we can tell them that they're not out there alone. I have a plan to inform them and lift them up with services they may not have even known about. But if you were to ask me what my superpower is, I can tell you that I am right-brain dominant, able to present views that you may not have even been aware of. That has turned out to be a core strength I bring to every group that I've been in. You're a witness.
So the second question will come from Councilmember Moss.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Ames. My question to you is how would the aforementioned attributes help you be an effective council member on day one?
Thank you, Councilmember Moss. How do you even know that I'm going to put in the work? Because I always have. Name anyone else that has attended every Neighborhood Association meeting, every City of Lakewood Civic Board Committee and Commission. Shouldn't that be the yardstick by which future council members are valued? But this isn't news to any of you. I'm sure it's a minimum requirement for council members who attend at least a couple of city boards and yet still take on your own favorite causes as well. Try to count the number of city events that we bumped into each other, and typically, I'm introducing community members to you and bringing the city a little closer together. I can tell you what I'm not going to do. I already trust my municipal leaders to have a plan for success in place. On the first day, I will not come in breathing fire and demand changes. The first month, I will listen, ask questions, then roll up my sleeves and join in the work that needs to be done. But if you want concrete examples, I can tell you, I will start finding qualified people. qualified people for the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board, then get to work on the rest of the boards. I have a plan that will fill all of them with eager, qualified members. With the city's blessing, I'll open a search and proposal to you for a Fourth of July Drone Light Show to quell the fireworks dilemma that has hounded Lakewood for so long. One definitive example I can give you is that when we get back to our first public meeting institute, I will be there a half hour early to greet people as they come in the chamber doors. Let that be an example of how much we value the input and presence of everyone who shows up at the City Council meetings to get the work done.
Thank you. We now move to Mr. Bulkey for question three.
Mr. Ames, what is your vision for the city of Lakewood?
Thank you, Councilmember Bulkey. I love that word, vision. That's why it was a topic heading in my letter of intent. A number of times, I've sent council members links of articles and videos and TED Talks about cities that have successfully adopted walkability, local services, economic development, and community involvement. I'd love for Lakewood to get credit for being an innovator. But we can take the risk out of ambitious projects. We don't have to reinvent the wheel if somebody else has already invented anti-gravity. I'm very enthusiastic about the city's plan to make downtown more walkable and more accessible. Then, carry that out into the Lakewood Station District Sub Area and so on. The day that you stop adapting is the day that you start going obsolete, and that is not the way that we are wired. I have mentioned creating a small business nursery zone. They're going to need help as we emerge from the financial ruin that COVID has wrought. I've started some of the legwork on that, but of course, I do not yet have access to the info and resources that you have. So you know what? We'll do that altogether.
Thank you. We now move to Councilmember Farmer.
Good evening, Mr. Ames. So what are the top three priorities the City Council should work on in 2021?
Thank you, Councilmember Farmer. I covered this about an hour ago in the CDBG. One, small, affordable housing. So many other cities are suffering from growing pains with this. I have, well, we have seriously looked into this, but as inequity widens and avalanche of residents are seeking entry homes, that's inevitable. I brought up the example of muckle shoot housing, small housing that was done there, and it was clean. They looked like they were having a good time. And the truth of the matter is, I got a feeling that is the future. It's not a question of how are we going to do it. Eventually, we're going to do it. Two, homelessness. Some of those homeless people are veterans. We need a type of stand-down task force that would follow Pierce County's point-in-time count and offer services. The cost of treating homeless in emergency room visits and stays at Western Washington Hospital is far more than it would cost to transition them into self-sufficiency. The governor's recent decision to create smaller state clinics will help us with that. And it'll also go a long way toward solving group home violence. And three, identity. I talked about this during my campaign over a year ago. We're not just a bedroom community of the military's northwest power projection point. We're a young city, and we have the opportunity to mold our town into a destination getaway as well and bring in outside revenue. I still remember hearing how close Lakewood, even before it was a city, almost had a theme recreation center. Wouldn't it be nice for Lakewood families? Coincidentally, recreation is also a city goal. Paris is the city of lights. Philadelphia is the cradle of democracy. Now, it's Lakewood's time, time to claim its title.
Thank you. And for our final question, we have Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Thank you, Charles, for coming tonight. As you know, I've asked everyone, in light of all the different candidates we have with varying backgrounds and expertise and experiences, why Charles Ames for us at this time in our history?
This morning. True story. This morning, I filled my hummingbird feeder. Wait, there's more. As I went to replace it, a hungry ruby red hummingbird zipped up and started taking in the nectar. He looked up, and he eyed me more than a couple times while I held the feeder, but he trusted me. You all know me. You know I have already shown that I work hard for years for this city that I adore, that we adore. I already have working relationships of most of our department directors and state and federal representatives, and I have a thirst to see how all of our municipality functions. Finally, I'm fully retired. I am all yours. See this part of my project whiteboard right up here? See this quadrant, the upper left? It's reserved for projects that require immediate attention. Right now, it's wide open.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you mentioned at the beginning that what you needed was the thirty-second wrap-up. So here we are.
Probably won't even need that much. What I said, less than a minute, right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't take this lightly. When I'm sworn in, I understand hard work and reliability. Reliability should be expected. I don't have any distractions. I will. This is my promise to you and Lakewood, make every single council meeting. And if I miss more than one other adjunct meeting, I will have considered my representation a failure. Challenge me. I got big shoulders. I hope I've made the choice easy for you. I look forward to joining you soon. Good night, Lakewood, and for everything. Thank you.
Well, thank you for participating in this process and for your willingness to step forward and serve your community. I you you are recognizable for the number of times that you participate in community events, and we thank you for that, too.
My praise, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all very much.
Right? And Ms. Schumacher. So we're going to come back next council meeting for an executive session to discuss the qualifications of candidates for appointment to public office. So be prepared for that. And at that same event and council comments or discussion at the end, we may also discuss if you have any ideas for narrowing the field or the process itself. So and Ms. Schumacher, what I'd ask you to do, because I think this would make it easier for council, is to create a PDF that has the candidates' resumes and letters in one PDF arranged in the order they appeared in the interviews, because that's the order of most people's notes. So we can follow through that when we discuss qualifications. Mr. Whalen?
It might also be helpful for Brianna, for whatever purpose we ultimately decide to use it for, to create a little spreadsheet that's got all those candidates in the order and our names on top. So if we come to a voting matrix, we'll have something to be able to use.
But not for the executive session?
Obviously, yeah.
Because our city attorney is waiting in the wings to slap.
Absolutely not. We could use in open session.
Yes. So I've just enjoyed spending so much time with you folks the last three days. And I think we're fortunate for those of the candidates who are still online. We're fortunate to have such a qualified group of people. It's a difficult process to begin with, and you truly have made it very difficult. Because the first thing occurred to me was, we only have seven council positions. Maybe we need a dozen. But it because we could fill it with qualified people. So thanks again to all of you who have participated and made our job difficult, but it's a lot better having a difficult job than being left with unqualified candidates, which certainly is not the case. Anything else from you folks? I don't see any hands raised. And we are adjourned. See you next Tuesday.